I'd like to see you both right now together.
What's that?
You have to see me both and then actually gather. What do you think we do then?
Yeah, Music Craft used to be the one that was.
You're here. Morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
There's a two video of uh whatever the most.
Get ready for group fest?
And soul.
No, we have busy day.
I got a bunch of old memories.
Group fest, we stood out in the rain, mud.
Oh, God, yeah. Really good.
Last year we could go there now.
It's beautiful.
It's beautiful.
It must be eighty-one.
We got, we did like night off last night, oh God, it was a beautiful night last night. Oh man, it was really good. Alright, it is nine o'clock, we will begin. Coffee with the board?
You got some, I'll show them. Oh, Jeff's coming.
Okay.
I couldn't turn my uh, I couldn't turn my head on.
Okay, we'll start, anybody wants to begin? Hey, Jackie. Okay, the floor is all yours.
I'll go, you know, I'm afraid to talk.
Yeah.
Um, I had a question mark about farmers markets and they may have brought it up here. Also, a copy with the board. Um, we also have them typically on Saturdays and Sundays. Went to Lombard, it's the summer, they run theirs from like two to seven or three to seven on a Tuesday. Packed. I know, I'd like to see them come back.
Yeah, we talked about that, I don't know just, it just doesn't seem like there's that much interest in it.
I'll tell you what, they may only have twenty booths at Lombard, but they are packed and I spend thirty dollars every week.
But who co- who coordinates it?
That's what I don't know.
Yeah.
No, I mean like, in the village.
I don't, I don't know.
Like, it takes, it takes a lot of effort to put it on.
I know you, I looked online and there was some type of form of an actual company that runs it, but I don't know who does the, the forms for um.
I'm aware of a couple of companies that will bring a, like, they will bring a farmer's market.
Right, and have their vendors and then they.
Right, when I had, when I had Fuel, I talked to one of them about doing it in the parking lot across the street. And we just, they decided that they just didn't have the volume and bill of part to warrant it because they gotta charge the farmers and they gotta make some money off it.
Yeah, it was, it was some form of application that was online, I really didn't dive too deep because I didn't know where to start. You know, Mark says it's part for recreation, is it someone else, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, except I talked to Keith Genorio and I'll give him a call.
It'd be nice if we could just allow a couple of farmers to set up a booth in that parking lot.
And not have to go through the vendors.
And not, well, not have to necessarily reserve that parking lot, do the whole insurance thing and like make it complicated. Um, I had a, I've got an interest in a farm out in Sycamore and they were harvesting and they brought down sweet corn and stuff and I talked to Harlan about it. And it's just such a pain in the, to, to do it.
To go through all the hoops and go all the way.
Right, right. So, we just talked to somebody we knew who had a vacant lot on North Avenue and it was private property and just put it there. Um, you know, but it's the village affiliation that just makes it more complicated than it's.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Than if somebody thinks it's worth to be able to do it.
And there was a vendor there that had tamales and bread and, I mean, they had variation of stuff and just, actually, one of the vendors was uh, that Arecelli's off the North Avenue, they came with their tamales and their hispanic sweets, they're, they were delicious. It was thirty dollars every week.
So maybe, instead of making it a coordinated effort, maybe we could look into like, what would it take to just reserve a spot of that parking lot or an area and then anybody can kinda come ad hoc as they want and sell their wares one day a week.
Somewhere. Right, during the same time.
And not have a coordinated farmer's market per se.
Yeah.
I know that in Oak Park, they, they have theirs, which is very successful, but it's also through a church, so I wonder if that's how.
Private property.
Yeah.
Makes it real easy on private property.
I mean, it's, I believe that, I believe that the village likely has some stake in that and has, they have the coordinated effort, but I don't know if anybody's ever been there, it's huge and it brings a lot of people, so they have to.
Where at?
I didn't, I was never gonna be like a.
Was they here?
Ween, where they have cabanas or anything like that, but.
It's across the street from uh, it's down the street from Oak Parker before its title.
Okay.
Top of Lake Street and it's, you know, they start off at six o'clock in the morning, they're dumping and then they have, uh, they make up the donuts there. They have the church makes the donuts and then they always have the corn there and they, there are always vendors that you know are gonna be there and then they have something that kind of rotate, they have music playing and they have stuff for the kids, like it's good, they do enough. But I think it's a coordinated effort, I don't think it's just.
Yeah, it's gotta be, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Um, I wanna start off then, I wanted to apologize to Al. Cause I cut him off last month about uh, the property at Wildwood and uh, he was talking about investing in that property. I really was very rude to him and I wanna apologize for that. Tell us, tell us why you should invest in, in that piece of property there.
I don't know what you're talking about.
You know, Bill Park Fuel Materials, given, given the, given the uh, the tax money.
Yes, okay. What do you wanna know?
Well, I just wanna know, but what, tell me something about that piece of property.
Uh, it's gonna be a two hundred and twenty unit residential with commercial on the first floor. They are gonna provide us ninety-six parking spots on the first floor of the building that they'll maintain. Uh, so we won't lose that parking for, you know, that parking lot that currently that we use for uh, businesses there. Like I said, two hundred and twenty residential units.
Why do we own that property?
We bought it eight years ago. Primarily, primarily for parking, but then with the idea eventually that it would be developed. Cause AK Mulch there, they just didn't fit the business.
Now, uh.
The business plan for that area.
Bill Park Fuel Materials just have their concrete trucks and do all that stuff, they're in business for what, eighty years or so?
Yeah, then they went bankrupt.
They went bankrupt and then uh, somebody bought the piece of property in what, two thousand sixteen?
No, they bought it in two thousand eight, I believe. Two thousand seven, two thousand eight, I think. That was AK Mulch that bought it. The village at the time had looked into buying it, but didn't have the money.
Okay, but we bought it in bankruptcy in two thousand sixteen again, so AK Mulch went out of business again?
No, no, we bought it from AK Mulch.
Okay, well.
And then AK, and then.
It was, it was a bankruptcy, we, whoever bought it, they went bankrupt. Yeah, whoever in two thousand sixteen.
No, not, not two thousand sixteen. Eight, um, Bill Park Fuel went bankrupt in two thousand seven, two thousand six, something like that.
Okay.
Uh, you, were you on the board then, Al? Okay.
And so.
And then, the village had looked at it, buying it, but I guess just didn't have the money at the time.
Okay.
AK Mulch bought it, put their business in there and then the village bought it from AK Mulch. And then AK Mulch bought um, the AT&T building where they're at now.
Gotcha.
And moved there.
Oh, really? Okay, so it's still running. So, therefore, uh, according to the tax records, whatever, Bill Park bought it from, was it CNH Properties or something like that?
It could be, yeah, the, whoever.
In two thousand and, and fourteen and they bought it for four hundred thousand dollars.
I thought it was two mil.
The village.
No, no, the village paid two point two million for it, but in, in two thousand and nineteen.
AK Mulch. No, AK Mulch bought it in two thousand seven.
I don't even know that part, I just went to two thousand fourteen.
It was probably for about four hundred.
So, whatever CNH Properties bought it, he was a realtor over at uh, Reedy. And um, so therefore, and they bought it for four hundred thousand dollars in two thousand sixteen, we bought it in two thousand nineteen for two point two million dollars. Uh, when we bought it, did we actually do a phase one environmental assessment of that?
Uh, we had some information, previous information on it. Um, I believe we did do a phase one, we did not do a phase two. But we had some previous documentation.
Okay, right. When, when Mulch bought it, they uh, in two thousand and eight, there's a report in the state of Illinois uh, that they had actually done uh, some phase two borings.
Correct.
And so therefore, there was some phase two work that we had.
Right, yeah.
And then also when the other guy bought the piece of property and there was some environmental liabilities on there?
Yes.
And those environmental liabilities were removed?
No.
And we never applied as, when we bought that property from the previous guy for two point two million dollars, we did not get a clean piece of property, did we?
Correct.
And so therefore, we've had the property since two thousand nineteen and we haven't uh, sent anything to the state of Illinois to clean that piece of property.
Correct.
So therefore, um, obviously here, can you transfer environmental liability to the current, to the new owner?
Yes.
No, you cannot.
Yeah. Yes, you can.
No, you cannot.
Yes, you can.
You cannot.
Ralph, you can, if your contract reads.
See, the new law specifically says that you cannot transfer unless you file uh, a credit protection or go file chapter nine.
No. If you did not cause the contamination, you can, in your contract, have the purchaser absolve you of any liability, future liability on contamination. We do that all the time, I do it all the time with clients of mine. We tell them, get indemnification from the seller that they are not gonna come after you. The buyer, whoever's.
So, why are we selling the piece of property that we bought in two thousand nineteen for two point two million dollars?
To develop it and, you know, increase the uh, traffic there, you know, the, the residential.
No, no, are we, are we giving it the property to the developer?
Well, that's what they, the redevelopment agreement is. They're gonna redevelop that property. We are gonna give them TIF money to help them redevelop it. With the idea that down the road, that is gonna be a viable and vibrant area. You know, the same thing as when Moore got in there, you know, it really kickstarted that, this is now gonna help kickstart it even more.
Okay, so we spent two point two million in nineteen, we're gonna eat that cost and we're gonna give them TIF money too, right? And how much TIF money we gonna give them?
Fifteen million.
Fifteen million, yeah.
Okay, so therefore, we have seventeen point two million dollar investment?
And it's a, it's a. Yeah.
And how long would it take us to recover that in taxpayer money?
Twenty years. If, if that generates, we figure that'll probably generate almost a million dollars a year in, in taxes.
But we won't see it for twenty years, cause it's part of the TIF. This is what I objected to at the last meeting.
Yeah, that's my giant question, so therefore, we don't recover shit for twenty, so we've got now an investment of seventeen and a half million dollars, seventeen point two million plus whatever the TIF costs are there and we're not gonna.
No, we don't, we're, we're not investing seventeen million. That, that fifteen million is coming out of the TIF. So it's not village money.
Where's the money gonna come from then?
From the TIF. From the, from the property taxes that it's generated over the life of the TIF.
And do we recover any of those property taxes for those twenty years?
No, the TIF does. That's the idea of a TIF district. The money stays in the TIF. And then, when the TIF is done, that increase in tax uh, dollars comes to the village and all the taxing bodies. That's why the taxing bodies are okay with it because twenty years down the road, their chunk that they're getting from it is gonna be that much higher. So the village is not putting money into it. It's not like every year we gotta write a check, it's coming from the property taxes and that's the idea of a TIF.
TIF, I don't know what that is.
TIF is tax increment financing.
Is that part of that whole?
St. Charles.
The St. Charles, the whole.
But there, there was originally a, a TIF there, Oval Team, when Oval Team was developed, was a TIF. And by the end of the TIF, we were bringing in over a million dollars a year.
Okay.
Which at the end, we, you know, when the TIF was done after twenty-three years, that money was distributed to all the taxing bodies. So we wrote a check to District Eighty-eight, I think for six hundred thousand dollars, cause that was still in there. District Forty-five got, I think, four hundred thousand dollars.
And was that the whole reason for the St. Charles Road?
The St. Charles Road TIF is eventually to, to redevelop the businesses on St. Charles Road, make that more viable.
Okay, so it's not actually costing the taxpayers anything?
Right.
It's just eventually we will get money or taxes back out of it?
Correct.
How, how long usually is a TIF?
Tiffs are usually twenty-three years. Although there is, there has been talk down at the state level that they wanna decrease it to ten years, but I don't think that, that they don't make it.
So is that gonna be our sixth TIF?
Seven.
Seventh TIF.
Seventh, no, seventh or eighth.
We have seven now, I think.
We have seven now, okay.
With St. Charles.
With St. Char, okay, so it's a seventh, St. Charles is a seventh.
So, if we didn't have TIFs, do we have an estimate of how much money would be coming in tax wise to us now, like as in two thousand and twenty-five?
If we didn't have the TIF?
If we didn't have the TIFs?
That's, I mean, who knows? You know, it would definitely be less. The North Avenue TIF is now starting to generate almost a million dollars a year in that TIF.
Yeah, how old's that TIF now?
It's probably about I don't know, eighteen years maybe? It's probably about five or six years.
What, what part of North Avenue?
It's, it's a section of it, I don't know exactly, you know, you, we'd have to look at the map. It's not the whole North Avenue.
Oh, I know, it's not the whole North Avenue, just.
Between Addison and uh, Ardmore roughly.
Excuse me?
Between Addison and Ardmore.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And predominantly on the north side.
Yeah. Yeah, we closed, there, there was a, where target is, that was a TIF at one time.
Oval Team too.
And then that closed, that was done after twenty-three years.
Oval Team too.
Yeah, Oval Team's done, yeah. But again, at the ti, at the end of the Oval Team TIF, that was generating almost a million dollars a year.
Oval Team, are those all rentals or is Oval Team all?
It's all rentals.
Owners?
It's all rentals.
All of it is rentals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So Ralph, my concern on the uh, on that project was they had four letters of intent and they kept extending those letters of intent, which was all well and good. A letter of intent is basically a a non-binding agreement that says, we'll give you this much money under these terms, blah, 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 and you kinda go back and forth and if that looks good, then you can write it up into a contract. And then they came in now with their fifth letter of intent, or is it their sixth? Is it five or six? Either way.
You're five.
It's a handful of them. And now, this last time, they say, okay, now we're ready to do it, but last minute, now they're saying, we want fifteen million dollars upfront through a bond that the Villa Park residents are essentially guaranteeing, that's gonna be paid for by the TIF. And we want that two million dollar property, which previously they agreed to pay us two million dollars for, give it to them. So, that's where you get your seventeen. So, my issue was, you strung us along for all these many years and now, when you think that you're gonna actually put it under contract, cause there is no redevelopment agreement, it's still just a line, a letter of intent and the letter of intent binds us not to offer it to other people. We can't get into contract with somebody else, we can't put it on the open market. So now, at the last minute, they're saying, we want these, we want Villa Park to be on the hook for fifteen million and we want this property for free. And so, we can walk away from the deal and we've got fifty thousand dollars of earnest money at stake.
Again, I'm, I'm not gonna do the yes and no here, the factor is, is that we apparently have environmental liabilities on a piece of property that we are then still on the hook for. And whatever indemnification is, they're going to, if they go bankrupt, and obviously now then we're out seventeen and a half million dollars plus whatever it is, plus the environmental liability of not cleaning it up. Now, I mean, this is what I do for a living, again, I'm just sort of sitting there like, that doesn't make any fucking numbers at all, that just, it, it why would you put yourself in, I mean, it was sort of like, you know, letting your dog drive your car. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. The numbers don't make any sense, much less the.
No, the numbers, you, the numbers don't make sense.
Not for twenty-three fucking years!
Watch your language, please. Come on.
Quit saying that, like, it's like, oh yeah, we're gonna make that money, no, you're not gonna make anything for twenty-three years!
So I think the bigger picture look at it is that, you're right, we're not gonna be participating in the tax benefit of it for twenty-three years directly. Cause if they just built the building, every year we'd be getting tax money for it. But instead, we have to put it in a bucket, which is the TIF that has to be spent on Villa Park, on that section of Villa Park, some various things right there.
I am not against TIFs, I think TIFs are a great idea.
But the other benefit.
They work very well out.
The other benefit that's being pitched to us is that the village will make additional revenue from places and eating taxes and various sales taxes around because they'll have more population and more people in there.
I remember in nineteen ninety-nine, when the, the TIF for Oval Team was gonna bring all these extra businesses to Villa. It didn't happen. But that's fine, you know, that's, okay, Moore's gonna do a lot better business, good for them, they deserve it. But you know, what are you gonna do?
We definitely.
Where's, where's, where's this extra business gonna come from? Where's it gonna go?
Presumably the local businesses and into just real estate at large. More people in town, they're gonna use some of the TIF money, I'm sure, to make certain road improvements and infrastructure type improvements that are allowed under the TIF.
Yeah, those people be, yeah, those people be driving cars, they're gonna be buying gas in Villa Park.
It's, it's a risk and I think we're overly reliant on TIFs. Like, in order for a TIF to be put in place, you have to declare that the area is a blighted area and I have a hard time believing that we've got that much infrastructure in Villa Park that is blighted. We may be depressed because of.
I was an investor in a business in downtown Le Berange, there was a restaurant, a bar, and I tell you, those computers, they kept walking off that train station and kept going right by us. You know, and it was like, we're sitting there, it was like all the other businesses, oh yeah, we're gonna be making lots of money!
Well, I can commiserate to have.
You can! I know you can, it's like, oh yeah, look at all that stuff, and you, you know, a great corner there, what is it, it's the largest, one point eight million people go by there every, uh, every summer.
I, you know, I just have to go back to my, with the TIF there on the union property. Yeah, it's fifteen million dollars that you could say the village is on the hook for, but it's really a fifteen million dollar investment for a future of Villa Park after the twenty-three years, which fifteen million, we don't have to put out. Because the, the, the taxes generated by that property are gonna fund that fifteen, we're just guaranteeing it, we're not laying out fifteen million dollars. So we're investing, investing in our future, but not any real money going out of our pocket right now.
But, but.
But when, but when it's, the fifteen, when it's finished, then we'll start getting our, return our, on our investment, even though we didn't put up any money.
It's the first money, because when you set up a TIF, those, those taxes naturally increase anyway, even if there's no development, your taxes keep coming.
You have to have it increased to your mouth, get the development on that, right?
So, but we're also coming off, we're also coming off the bad decisions that were made on Hawthorne. Who also wanted TIF money, who also released a bond, who's also not doing anything with it.
Which is, which worked on, which ones that?
Hawthorne project? Ardmore?
The train station.
The train station, yeah.
Right.
Well, you tied, you tied our wagon to the wrong horse there, so.
Right, and we have the same chance of tying our wagon to the wrong horse.
But, have we lost any money over there? At Hawthorne?
Yes.
What?
We've knocked down businesses that were producing tax money. We now have depressed property values because people come in to buy property in that area and they see a gravel pit that nothing's going on there. We've lost money because.
I'll give you the, we lost tax revenue from the business.
So that's your answer, I mean, have we lost money? Yes, we have.
Hey, those businesses weren't generating big dollars to start with.
I don't know what big dollars are, I mean, you asked if we lost money and yes, we have lost money.
We have lost.
And we also have, we have a stalled project that just looks like garbage over on the north side of Villa Park.
Not really. So has every investment you ever made turned out a hundred percent to your favor? Sometimes you make it, take a chance and it doesn't work out.
Well, sometimes you shouldn't go buy uh, trump coins, cause you know that's not gonna be a good investment.
There you go.
All right, so therefore, we can end with that, yeah, there's not always, there's always not great investments. But the fact is, the village is gonna be sitting here for twenty-three years and be like, well, it's not gonna cost us any money, no. Taxpayer money goes in for that TIF district and it gets used in two thousand and twenty-five.
You get the same amount of tax money over those twenty-five years that you get right now.
Do you know what the first interest is or the first value is, so therefore, if you need for twenty-five dollars?
Let me backtrack, because Al asked me, asked me a direct question. Have my investments that I've invested always worked out to a hundred percent? And he, he asked that question because nobody who has ever invested a dollar can ever say yes to a hundred percent.
That's right.
But, what I can say a hundred percent of the time is that any investment that didn't go exactly as planned, I learned from. So here we are, in a village. And I'm learning from the mistakes that previous administrations have made and I'm learning from the mistakes that were at Hawthorne. So I'm taking that knowledge and I'm learning and I'm applying it to AK Mulch. So, if you wanna play games and say, every single dollar, no, maybe not. But, a hundred percent of the time, I have learned from previous mistakes and I don't make them again. And that's what we're trying to avoid here with a different administration and a different group of trustees and a different board up here to not make the same mistakes that you made when you were president. That you got us involved in Hawthorne, here we are in Hawthorne, a lot of mistakes were made. I'm not directly blaming you for the mistakes, but I'm learning from your mistakes.
You're right, they're blaming me right now.
I'm learning.
I'm blaming you for Wildwood.
I'm learning from my mistakes and I'm learning from the village's mistakes so that we don't make those same mistakes again.
That's right.
And, and that's what we owe the village as trustees to do, learn from the village's past mistakes.
Right, so are you able to lock in that learning to apply it to the unions there to, to make it happen? You know, are you able to work that agreement out?
Well, that's what we're trying to do and that's why I was the only voice up on the board that didn't just jump all over a seventeen million dollar gift to Marquis on our fifth letter of intent. There should only be one or two letters of intent until you get something under contract. What do you, wait, I don't know what you're saying when you're interrupting me.
I didn't, I didn't, I'm not aware of you saying this, that uh, letter of intent, I, I'm not aware of any of those, so.
Okay, well, it's hard to have a discussion if you're ill-informed. I mean, it was, it was on, it was on last Monday, it was on Monday's meeting.
So now you're gonna be trying to be again?
What? I still don't know what you're saying when you're interrupting me.
I'm not gonna try to you yet.
So let's go back to uh, to Villa.
I just have a question.
Alright, hang on.
Me or him?
Ralph, what, what were you gonna say?
I'm sorry, what was that? Please, go, I'm sorry. I don't interrupt you, I wanna, well, seriously, I've already interrupted way too many people.
No, go ahead. I'm just listening, I'm listening, that's all, I'm listening.
I already apologized, I'm already interrupting.
Alright. He doesn't have a problem with that.
What, what, what guarantee do we have that we don't end up over on Villa with the same situation we have on Ardmore?
Yeah, no guarantee. Anytime you have a developer coming in, you have no guarantee that they're gonna, uh, can, that they're gonna finish the project. But, you look at the past history of that company and you look, and you look at the financing they have behind them, which seems a lot better than what the guy on, uh, that Hawthorne has. So, but are you gonna guarantee that they're not gonna go bankrupt? No, there's, there's no guarantee about that, right?
Yeah, no, I understand.
But you, you know, I mean, you do, you know, your due diligence and you do what, what you think is best and make the, the best decision that you can.
Well, is, are there any future plans for the Ardmore Avenue, um, Hawthorne, whatever you call it?
It's got till the first of the year.
Well, he, that's what, you know, his plans are to.
He's got till the first of the year.
To do something with this? This is on my.
Well, it's, he.
I think he has two ninety-day extensions and I think his first ninety-day extension is coming up.
Yeah, next week.
So it's like right after the first of the year?
It's like right here.
Well, no, it's now, he's got, he has until, I think, this week to, to show financing.
Right.
And then he can have a ninety-day extension on there.
So effectively, you're correct.
For Hawthorne. For Hawthorne.
So then after, if he doesn't do anything with it, say he gets his ninety-day extension and the first of the year or spring, whatever, rolls around. Or spring, whatever, rolls around.
Then the boxing gloves come off.
Excuse me?
Then the boxing gloves come off.
Oh, okay.
Well.
The boxing gloves.
If it doesn't, then the agreement with the village is done.
The boxing gloves.
And then we, again, we we have options, but they're not good options.
Some of the options.
Yeah.
Because it's private property, you know, he owns the property. Now, we can go after it, and there has been discussion about going after it under eminent domain, but now you're looking another two years and a lot of attorney fees and.
Is there any way that the village can, okay, it's his property.
Five more.
But it can't be left in the condition it's in.
No. No, we can go after him and. You know, which we had, I mean, he's, he gets periodic fines now for, you know.
Yeah.
Fence going down.
When it's a dangerous area, when you think about kids getting in there and.
Yeah.
How long had old team, was that a dampness, was that empty?
Uh, they're here to be ten years, you know?
No, it was twenty-seven years plus.
Twenty-plus years.
And I remember talking to Valerie Danner, cause I lived in that area there, and I said, you know. Get somebody where they need to replace the windows, at least put something over the windows, and she said, we're not that way to our business community. There's no boxing gloves, there's ninety fucking foam fingers.
Yeah, done.
Can I change the subject?
Sure.
Sure, please.
Please, something a little bit more. I, you know, Nick and and Matt about this, um, as y'all know, I live by Lufkin, my house directly west of it. See tons of kids in there all the time, and I am advocating to get a crosswalk at Van Buren, like they have at the Prairie Path. Um, on York Road, and they also have one in front of Madison Meadows where it's a kind of like a pillar. That says, you know, must cross in the crosswalk. If we get, get the bleeping sign that bleeps like we do at the Prairie Path, that would be. Just the icing on the cake, but I got a little bit of pushback because it was told there were two teeter totter signs on both ends of the park. Honestly, I lived there almost ten years, I just realized they were there when someone told me they were there. Um, a friend of mine's from Bunko's, kid got hit and they technically said, well, no, the kid ran into the car regardless. There needs to be a cross in there from kids going east to west. And another part of the argument was, we haven't had an accident there in ten years. Well, the last seven years, it's been closed as a pool. And the three years that it was open. It was a pool that parents were going there with their kids to watch them swim, where it's apples on oranges, it's not apples on apples anymore, you got kids going to the park. You got kids going there fishing, so I'm advocating for a crosswalk there, I will buy the paint at that, so it may be for the cost.
Well, I think the crosswalk is a great idea. The two components of it would be painting the street and doing like the bright yellow path right across, you know, to just.
Right, and then like, and they have, and if you go by like Madison Meadows or York Road, I want to say that's South Street. It's just a Ballard that says Moss Stop, and I'll tell you what, every time I go by Madison Meadows, that catches my attention. Not the two teeter totter signs that are six feet high going north and south, but I never knew they were there.
But I think we should paint the street.
Well.
Paint the street.
She started about the little signs, it used to be where the Great Western is by the police station. The little two, three foot signs that would come up in the middle of the of the road.
And there's like a Ballard.
Oh, right in the middle.
Right in the middle, yeah.
Okay.
You know, so maybe it'll be the lane divider.
That's a really low-cost, quick solution.
Yeah.
And then in the meantime. We can work on the lights and get quotes on that, cause that's gonna be a bigger project.
Well, there's gonna be an Ardmore redevelopment project that three, four, five, twelve years, whatever, that's the idea. And that's where maybe the.
Maybe, maybe I was being oversensitive, but I felt that there was pushback on it, there was traffic and safety.
Well. I I think they're they're focusing more on dealing with the redevelopment project and slipping it into there, I I don't quite know why, because the cost of the crosswalk and the sign is.
And a Ballard, I mean.
Yeah, nothing.
Yeah.
The more involved stuff such as the blinking lights and all that, that can be handled under the redevelopment of Ardmore.
And there are, there are gonna be new signs at, um, the Great Western Trail at Ardmore and Villa.
Oh, good. Instead of the spinners.
Yeah. Um.
Good.
I mean, I know, because I come up and down Ardmore at least six times a day, I know from living here. That I stopped by the Western Trail both ways, that I stopped by the Prairie Path. Because I live here, but you've got people that are coming from Elmhurst or anywhere else.
I don't have people that drive this now, don't be playing Elmhurst.
What, they're using.
Cause their dogs are driving.
What, you. They're using Villa or Ardmore to cut through to get to Hawthorne. So I just want to throw that out there then.
So now's a good time to put that on the agenda for traffic and safety.
I've been there.
Okay, is it on the agenda?
It is on the agenda, um.
So let's get a discussion on traffic, traffic and safety.
There were, there was one on Monday, that's what the pushback was.
And then let's have. Well, pushback or not, let's have them. That a full discussion on it, and then brought back up to the board, so we can have a discussion on it.
And, and my understanding. And 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 part of my email was, cause I know that traffic and safety gets them bartered by people that say, oh, they're speeding down my street, and they want a stop sign just to make sure that people slow down.
Yeah.
I know from Guerrero saying, you, a stop sign is regularly traffic, it's not to slow traffic. And I know they get them bartered and they get tired of hearing the same old thing, or, you know, parking is an issue, or whatever. But I think this is really, really crucial, we owe it to our residents, kids.
But we have a stop sign there, right?
At Jackson, but, but if you're coming from Van Buren, are you gonna walk all the way to the Jackson Corner?
At Jackson.
At Jackson, yeah.
To cross the street and then all the way back into the park? Kids aren't gonna do that, come on now.
Well, and I feel like there's a a little bit of kind of shame on us because we knew that this park was coming up. We knew that there was gonna be, there were gonna be kids that needed to get there, and there really was no way of, except for Jackson, getting across the street. And you're right, it wasn't a pool, and so I also wanna pull that discussion to. Are we gonna learn from this mistake, going back to that conversation? We're gonna learn from this mistake and are we gonna make sure that this doesn't happen at the rec center? And we're gonna have that, have the ability to get kids across the street safely. So we don't have to come back two or three months after that opens and like, hey, I really need to, we need a block.
I mean, I, I know, I know the kids in my block, they know sooner get home. And they are grabbing their fishing poles and they go sit on those rocks and they meet kids from the other side coming over and they are adamant that there's a huge catfish in there, and I told the one little boy that when he catches that huge catfish. To come over to my house, we'll lay it and I'll bake it for him.
I come home that way every, every month, it's insane.
I mean, I, I mean, they, they get to the point where they're so busy and I'm like, guys, just put your fishing poles in my pack, Gary, you can pick them up later.
Kids are lazy folks, they say they just wanna get there, they're not gonna look.
The biggest thing's gonna be the teenagers that are driving from Woolbrook. Going up to St. Charles or whatever. That's where you're gonna get your speeders, I mean, when I was a teenager at Woolbrook, you didn't speed pass there, cause there was always a cop in that early block. Always, that was the speed trap. But, you know, I don't know if it's known that way, you're gonna have a lot of teenagers flying down Ardmore Avenue.
Yeah, some of the parents drive worse than the teenagers.
Oh, I can attest to that.
Go ahead.
Yes, John Cuthbertson from Traffic and Safety. Yes, this was brought up in our last meeting, one of the conditions we need to look at before we jump to a conclusion for a crosswalk. Is going southbound, it's an extreme downhill, people coming off the stop sign, starting to accelerate. In wet or snowy conditions, and you come to a crosswalk, we need to make sure that there's not an issue with that. I'm, I'm all for the crosswalk, so don't get me wrong. Um, there is not a crosswalk on the south side of Jackson at the intersection. I think it is due to, there's lack of sidewalks, you have to cross over top of Jackson, cross over Ardmore, then come back south. Um, we almost need to look at putting a crosswalk on the south side of Jackson and Ardmore, that'd be really close to the pool. But like I say, as far as putting a crosswalk down, you know, quarter block on a downhill condition, we need to look at that first. So we don't have kids with a false sense of security crossing a crosswalk and people sliding, or somebody running into the car that just came to a quick stop. So before we jump to, we need to research this a little bit, like I said, don't get me wrong, I'm all for the crosswalk, I really am.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that we don't make a mistake.
Sure, good, good point, thank you.
Then one of the things I brought up too, and, um, you know, if we need a traffic study. We have to do it at the appropriate times. No one walks to Woolbrook High School, I am convinced. Because in the morning, Ardmore is like a train of cars, same coming home. So I mean, if we're gonna do a traffic study, let's not do it at four o'clock on a Sunday afternoon. Do it at five o'clock at night, do it when the kids are going to school in the morning, do it on a hot summer day, when the kids are all at the Spring Path.
Well, so, um, trustee Kozar had mentioned painting just the street, just so that there's the warning to drivers. Saying, hey, you're, there's something coming up slowing down, is that an option? I know that other places they'll like write park or they'll write school across the street. What is needed for that? Do we know?
For what, I'm sorry, what was it?
When you write something down on this, on the street with your paint and it says like park or school, or you have like those bigger yellow kind of warning signals. So it's not necessarily a crosswalk, but it is meant for drivers to understand that, hey, pay attention.
Yeah.
What does that involve?
I should be just happy with the crosswalk and the Ballard in the street, because that's, I mean, the flashing light, I understand what you're talking about, you know, all of a sudden you have to slow because of the lights. Eliminate the lights, put the big yellow sign up there, but the Ballard in the paint, I think the Ballard in the paint would be an easy fix because.
By the word, do you mean like, um, I know going up and down Wilson. They have about yay high, and it says.
Yeah. Yeah, that's in front of the Mac Center.
Must yield to pedestrians.
Yes, it's exactly what I want.
Oh, that, yeah.
And yellow paint would be fun.
And, and right, and it says little street, so it's in nobody's way.
Right.
So do we need a traffic study to do something like that was my question.
I don't think we need, I don't think that's on, that's not a traffic study.
I don't, I, I, I think yellow paint and their Ballard would be enough, because you know what, that person that's driving, maybe they're new to the area. But after seeing it six times, eight times, twelve times, they're gonna be reminded every day that there's a park there, and they need to slow their roll.
But Jack does bring up, or John does bring up a good, uh, point. That you don't, we have to balance like that false sense of security with the kids, because there isn't a stop sign here, there. When we first started talking about it, I was. I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about where Jackson was, where there's an existing stop sign. And at that, no problem, paint the street, let's do it tomorrow. Or right in the middle.
Yeah, like, well, and I understand what you're saying, if we put the, the blinking lights like down, but I'm kind of like more towards Van Buren.
I like, uh.
The Ballard.
Carrie's idea though, where instead of just painting this narrow strip, where kids will run and they see the yellow and they just keep on going. You know, and there is no stop sign and probably won't get too much traffic in the winter going to the park, but nevertheless, I mean, it can happen. The idea where you go from basically the start of the park to the end of the park, and you paint that portion of road and it just says, you know, park or something like that. That might be a good approach.
Yeah, well, traffic and safety, guys can look at that, yeah.
The trouble is that the kids are doing this now, they're crossing Ardmore right now.
Yeah.
And then they're coming from Van Buren east.
Yeah, I talked to one, the homeowner directly north of the park. And he was telling me that the kids that live. Van Buren area, east of Ardmore. They just come on Van Buren and they just go right across, they're not gonna go up to Jackson, Jackson, and then on the other side back to the park.
No, they're not gonna go to Jackson. Right.
So. My concern is, you know. It, there might be other issues with it, yes, but. I'm concerned about having no, not, doing nothing.
I think minimum those, those ballards with the little thing as a bandage would be great for them.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying there's nothing right now, and and I'm concerned.
And Lombard kinda had that same issue on the Great Western, and they put up that big.
Gardrail.
Gardrail fencing thing, right, to prevent people and forcing them around.
Yeah, go ahead, you get something to say?
I, I think these are all nice little ideas that make your town look great, but in reality, I don't think they really get made that much. Um, a couple meetings ago, I talked about, you know, getting creative with, you know, speeders and, you know, traffic control and so forth. What's the, um, policy with, where the laws with putting up some kind of speed law around that area? That slows down, that slows, that slows traffic down.
Plows tear up every year. Plows tear up every year.
Yeah, yes, the same question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna listen to thump, 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 if you live there all day and all night?
Well, if you're concerned about safety with kids.
I know, you're gonna, but I'm just saying there's.
You know, I mean, pick, pick your poison.
I think when I first looked at it, I think you put her Villa had them on, and they were no sooner put in there, I think they were taken out.
You should take them out.
What, what about, I, I have absolutely no idea if this can be done, however.
Yeah.
If Ardmore's stop sign, leave Jackson alone, stop sign at Jackson, what if Ardmore's stop sign was moved down by the park?
You have to pay for it.
Or, yeah, Vivier to the park, whatever, so that Ardmore stop.
Cause that's, that's a four-way, and this would only be one way coming off of Van Buren.
That, that'll be addressed, I would, I would think that would be addressed during the Ardmore renovation project.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Cause we're gonna get federal funds to do a lot of different stuff in that area. So that'll all be addressed as part of that, and they, and they may decide that that's a good thing to do.
Yeah.
You have to do a traffic study to.
Oh, yeah, 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 I've got a traffic study.
Yeah, anytime you fix something.
By the time you get that done and you spend the money and everything else to, you know.
You're gonna spend some.
Yeah.
So, something like a crosswalk and a Ballard might be a short-term answer until those study gets done, but.
Yeah, I think that would, because I drive up and down Wilson every day. And I am used to seeing, and you do slow down. Cause it's telling you there's a crosswalk there. So you do slow down, and I think once people get used to seeing that thing. It, it's gonna click, oh, wait a minute. There's crosswalk here, there's park over here. And I think that's.
It's gonna train their brain.
Right, I think it, it is a quick fix now. And if something else happens later, then fine, but that, that sounds, those, you see them all over the place. And it is a reminder that, hey, you're going past Madison Meadows, you need to slow down.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Yes, and this is a little bit extreme, but, um, is it possible on doing a reduced speed limit? You know, children play or park or some kind for that, or actually put one of those flashing speed limit sign, or you're on the, the radar signs over there to create attention. To the public that, hey, look, there's a park here, kids may be.
Yeah, but though.
I mean, cause it's, I mean, Ardmore's only twenty-five anyway over there, you know?
Why not?
Yeah, but yes, that's, you know, I like, yeah.
Oh, and to, I'm sorry, is it Jack or John?
Um, really, it's John, but I go by Jack.
To your point, when you said you're coming south and there's a slope and all of a sudden they're gonna have these flashing red lights, I don't necessarily want the red lights. I'm happy with the Ballards.
We just don't want kids stepping out in front of a car, car, false sense of security, the guy comes with quick stop, and the people coming off the stop sign going downhill. Are running into each other, you're actually gonna create a, a situation, you know, like I say, I'm for the crosswalk, but you've gotta look at the bigger picture. Are we gonna create another issue? And kids with it, if you give them any kind of idea of a crosswalk and wait, the, the personality of kids today, hey, I've got the right, right of way. Pedestrians have the right of way, you wanna give false sense of security, they step out all the time.
It's in a personality, it's absolutely.
And unfortunately today, we need to train our little darlings, you gotta look at the big picture, not just yourself, get off your phone, look both ways. And unfor, like I said, the personality of kids today is completely different, and they're just gonna step out in front of a moving car, I mean, you see that every day.
Adults do it, they're basically buried in their phone.
Yeah. I went past that park actually, and wow, there's a lot of kids playing in there, and that was at about five minutes to four.
Yeah.
That park was packed.
What, then, uh, Lufkin?
Yeah, Lufkin, actually, I went past there and I looked and I saw the big sign, teeter totter, even though there's not a teeter totter in there, kids don't know what a teeter totter is anymore. I looked back and googled it on your phone, see a shirt sign, I know it hits it out the, the insignia, but.
I've noticed that place is full of kids.
Can I change the subject whenever you guys are ready?
Sure.
Since we got Jack, John here. A couple of months ago, uh, I had mentioned that there was somebody that got hit on a bike on the prairie path at, um, Monterey.
Hmm.
Are we, what's going on over with traffic safety about talking about the prairie path on Monterey? There's no marking, there's nothing, there's not anything at all.
And the line of sight is terrible.
I mean, we have, we have, we have, we had mentioned two months ago and somebody had said, well, we can get those trees trimmed back or whatever it was. They haven't been trimmed back in two years, I mean, in two weeks, in two months. Uh, I don't wanna exaggerate. So therefore they haven't been trimmed back. What, what's going on with that?
I know we've put in to have them trimmed and.
Yeah, and I, I bring that up every couple of weeks with the manager when I meet with him and I don't, the last I talked to him was probably about two weeks ago and he was gonna have someone in Public Works cut that, but I hadn't, I hadn't been on there.
I'm sorry, I was like, we talked about, well, flashing lights or yellow stuff and we finally said, okay, what the hell, let's just get the trees trimmed. None of that.
Yeah, I'll check on, on that again, uh, cause I know that's on the southeast side is really about the only time, the other sides aren't bad. Like when you're coming down, you can see north. And if you're going east, you can see north and you can see south, but that southeast side with the bushes there, that, that's, and that's just, you know, it is county, but I think we.
Okay, we're, we're talking about.
We're just trying to take out the bushes.
I live right there and that's how I go and come every day from my home and everywhere. And I am the one that stops, I honks and tells you about like what you wanna listen to.
I don't care.
I stop, I honk, I make sure that there's nobody, I honk again because they're coming up from all over the area. You can't see anywhere.
You can't see anywhere.
From anything going north or south, it's awful. And.
And then the tri, you know, that's the tri-pan knob too. So you're gonna have more traffic on that.
I mean, and it's great cause it's getting utilized, but.
Than we got, right now we're gone and I don't, you can't see any.
I got my chainsaw in my truck. After the meeting, if anybody wants to join me, we'll go over there.
Who wants, who owns the vegetation?
I'm not sure if that's even.
The county, county owns it. But we maintain, I mean, we cut the grass and everything, so we can, we can.
Or just cut the bushes back.
Yeah.
And ask forgiveness, like, cut it down, ask forgiveness.
Yeah, no, we can, they wouldn't even notice, yeah.
No, county doesn't, you have to be more than joyful if we did something.
We, we have proof that the county doesn't care because my subject is the parking on Wildwood and I've been talking to the Traffic and Safety Commission about it. They moved us from parking on the north side of Wildwood to the south side of Wildwood. It's horrible. The bushes were so overgrown, they were touching the street. You can't park anyplace there, there are animals all over the place, can get up under your car. Your car's gonna get scratched if you pull and actually park there. I drive a school bus and I park it there three to maybe four hours a day. I have to fight bushes to get out of my bus because I can't get out on the street side. The other day I pulled away from the curb with a branch that's stuck in my door.
Now we're sitting here in Wildwood and what?
Wildwood and Charles, Wildwood in Illinois.
Okay.
On Wildwood, east of Villa, they're still parking on the north side of the street. And that goes all the way to Euclid, west of Villa. For some unknown reason, and I've discovered that no one even on the board now was on the board then. No one knows why they decided to move us from the north side to the south side. It's terrible.
Yeah, I don't know, John, do you got it?
Yes, you know, I have, I know you brought it up about having something done there. We did put in a recommendation, recommendation to have that foliage trimmed way back. I go through there quite a bit, I know exactly the problem if you're coming northbound to Monterey. People come running jogging and it's a split second to get it trimmed back so we, everybody can see each other a lot sooner and try and avoid that. Um, why county hasn't come out to trim that? Do we actually have a department that we can do that or is?
Yeah, Public Works can get out there and do it.
Cause I know, I, we had the same issue at Villa, the railroad tracks by the bus company where the buses couldn't see down going eastbound and that was Umer's. We brought it up to the Umer's Traffic and Safety and that was done like the next morning, you know. And it's, it's like, well, it has probably done before I even got home from the meeting. There were a few of us from Traffic and Safety approached Umer's over and I'm just wondering what the delay is, if the county has to do that, if that. That would be the first step is to trim those bushes way back, the foliage. So at least both driver and the joggers can see each other a lot sooner, you know, split second sooner makes a big difference.
But there again.
From there, if that doesn't work out, we need to go to next steps for something more and spend money on flashing lights and things like we did at other intersections. But I think the trimming, the foliage is, should be step one. We need to get.
Right, but then it's just gonna regrow again. There's gotta be a permanent solution.
Yeah, you gotta trim it to the ground.
It, right, it's like our parking issue. They came, they trimmed it back. But two months from now, we're gonna be in the same situation. And there's no reason for us to park there, no reason. There's plenty of parking spaces on the north sided street. And, and I just, none of us understands why they moved us. And then we get put in a hazardous situation because of those trees. Kids going up and down, easy to slither through the bush. Try and take stuff out of your car, go right back up. Nobody sees, nobody hears, well, my German shepherd might hear, but. I mean, it's just, there's no reason for it. No one can tell us a good, valid reason to change our parking.
Yeah, well, that again would be something Traffic and Safety would have to look at. You guys are gonna get.
Well, I'm letting you guys know that we've looked into it with them.
Can't really do it.
Yeah.
And the board needs to know because I'm not gonna stop, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna keep going.
Okay.
Let's also check with community development because I think that was part of the whole parking scheme. When the whole parking situation in that general area was changed.
The, the point being that no one's going to park.
Say again?
I think Captain Mantles is actually working on that. It's one of the things he's got on his list of things to do.
Okay.
It is, it was changed.
How do we follow up with you?
It was changed in twenty eighteen. Al, you were the president at the time.
Yeah, that sounds right.
It did not go through Traffic and Safety then, it went, but it was part of a whole downtown parking project.
Villa. And let me tell you, no one is parking at Wildwood and Charles or Illinois or Summit and walking six blocks all the way back to Villa. Nobody does it. I mean, I, I've lived there for thirty-three years. Nobody does it.
Okay.
Wouldn't it, it be an ordinance that would have been put through to see that?
It was, it was.
It was, it would have been, yeah.
But it wasn't ordinance state what the reasoning was?
No.
Just because.
No.
Just cause.
And, and I watched, I actually watched the, the board meeting video from that ordinance and although there was discussion, none of it covered Wildwood. If, if, this was a whole downtown area parking plan and Wildwood seems to have got folded into it somehow. And at the time, Venus was the, the Public Works guy, obviously he's gone. I wouldn't expect board members to remember the specifics
Yeah.
uh, of something like that. So I know Kevin's digging into it. I've been trying to find out what I can.
Okay.
I, I just can't, you know, find much.
Sure, okay.
Uh, how much parking is the new rec center gonna have?
Boy, I don't know, numbers on it?
Right in front of it's gonna be the parking area, right?
On the front and then on the east side also. And then there'll be option going farther north to, to add parking if need be.
North?
Yeah, on the east side.
On the northeast corner.
Yeah, there'll be open space now, but it'll be, there's need be.
Where the ball field is.
Oh, so the parking's gonna come off St. Charles Road into the Y High?
No, no, it's gonna come off Wildwood.
No, no, it's gonna come off Wildwood, you're gonna unturn, return right.
But they'll be parking, they'll be parking in the front of the building, they'll be parking on the east side of the building.
There is a sign up over there by the new building that says something about a public hearing, doesn't give a date, doesn't give a why.
I think that's, I think that's on planning and zoning on Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't get on my keel and try.
Yeah, I didn't, I even, I didn't look at the, um, the agenda yet for planning and zoning, but there's something, cause like, Greg Gola is the petitioner, so it's gotta be something. They're, they're asking for appearance or something. Yeah, Steve.
So I have two questions, I wanna sneak in in the last minute here. One concerns if whether or not Parks and Recs has given any thought to coming up with a, a new fee schedule that would combine use of the rec center with the pool to make combined family rate, uh, or residential rate. Uh, for people to use both facilities. Second question is whether or not, uh, the village has made any progress in uh, utilizing a full-time grant writer position within the village.
Okay, as far as the grant writer, no. Um, they just, they just don't feel it's, it's worthwhile right now doing that. Uh, we, we, I brought that up several times and, you know, it's just nobody seems to really be interested in it.
Did we ever get an urban planner?
And then regarding the fees, I don't know, Cheryl.
Yes, we have made that discussion. As a commission, we have made that discussion between making the rec center and the pool a combined payment.
Control classes?
That sounds a good idea.
Along with that discussion was also brought up that we also have the golf course. Combined rec center, pool, golf course. We own three, we've got three packages going on, given how that discussion has been brought up. That we have three properties now that could make a combined package. So it was brought up to the commission.
Okay.
And that discussion, one of the fees were coming up.
And so what, when are the fees gonna be announced?
That I believe is coming in October, someplace. The discussion has.
Look at Tuesday's, um, agenda has some information on there about the pre-pricing and the pricing that they are going to propose to the board.
Is there a cost to use the new Lufkin Park?
No.
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 Okay, I didn't think so.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's actually a really great park, it's got, you know.
It is a great park, I agree hundred percent.
It's multi-generational, people walking the, I've never seen so many people run that park in the nine years we've lived there.
Oh, I, I agree, I think it's wonderful, I was just asking a question.
Regarding urban planning, um.
Is that the girl?
Michelle, yeah, Michelle.
Is that the girl with the glasses that shows up in the news with marks, skinny girl?
Yeah. Right, yeah, that, yeah, she's, um, she's, I think she's got a background in urban planning, but you know, she's his, kind of is his assistant, but then she's also doing other things like that. Right now, the, right now, the, the main thrust has been cleaning up the zoning. Um, and I think eventually they'll get into more of that urban planning type stuff.
Quick question, I promise.
Okay.
I have a dead tree in my parkway.
Mm-hmm.
Who do I take that will not take the tree to?
Who borrows tree division?
Yeah, well, you can, you can go on, well, it's Public Works.
Oh, okay.
But you can go online and put in a request.
Oh, okay, oh, thank you so much for telling me that because I wouldn't have thought of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you can go online and there's a way to, to put in like a, a service request to Public Works.
Okay. Thank you so much, I have no idea.
Okay.
I, I've put in, that's kinda why I'm here today. I put in a service request in twenty twenty after the cicadas for a parkway tree. Uh, all the ends are dead from the cicadas trying to plant their roots. And then I knew it was only gonna get worse, so I called mid cicada range this year and said, come on, I called four years ago. Parkway tree is only gonna get worse. And then I asked, and I called again for a third time. But this was again right before, right after, uh, the Highland situation, so I knew they were gonna be busy. But I'm like, can you tell me what, where am I in the queue? And she's like.
What year they're gonna come out?
Yeah, and, and she said, um, I can, I can just put your name in again and hopefully they'll get around to you. But I guess I would, do I have to get it for you in order to understand what the situation is and how long it takes to just trim a tree?
Yeah, what's your, what's your address? What's your address?
Uh, three hundred South Summit.
Okay.
But Summit is a main thoroughfare and I look at other cities and the trees look lovely and I s,
Well, if it's, yeah.
The trees are just not kept up on the pathways, they're just not.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know if it's a labor issue, I don't, I don't.
No, it's, it's just personnel, I mean, just, you know, they're, they're busy, they do a lot. And the tree crew also does other things.
I have, yeah, I, I looked at actually doing, cause I used to do gardening and tree work. And I looked in, but I'm not gonna, uh, take care of streets, I'm not gonna do that job, but I wouldn't mind just, you know, hire me and I'll get it done myself, I need a bucket.
Can I change the subject?
No, he's got his hand up.
Oh, okay.
Where, uh, more school is, Yale's a one-way during school hours.
Okay.
There's a one-way sign during school hours that's not being obeyed every morning, see cars going the wrong way. Every couple of neighbors to see. Um, in some towns, they actually have where, um, in the direction that you're not supposed to go, they actually have horses up. Bottom one half of that road, is that something that can be, can be implemented by chance or can we look at that? The, kind of the void that.
Yeah. We'll look at that, yeah.
Traffic is, parents are dropping off kids, residents are going through there, the park in the street, facilities are being made in the school. And just nothing will be.
I'm telling you, nothing stops a parent trying to get to the school. They will disobey any sign, any.
Well, if you guys, they're, they're not there.
They don't have a bus, right?
They wanna, they wanna do that to their kid for this.
Exactly. They're going to school and they will go through any, anything, it doesn't matter, I deal with it every day.
Okay, yeah.
So in schools that I've taught in, what typically has happened when you've had that situation is the, the village would give the custodian a sign to roll out and then they'd roll back in and it's kind of just a temporary thing until drop off is done or until.
There was one on that corner and it's been sitting by the pump house for like the last five or six years. And it's, and that thing weighs probably about seventy-five pounds.
Really?
And it, it's a pedestrian cross sign.
It's not like horses.
Yeah. Okay.
How about putting a little more house crossing yard up there?
There is one.
There is one for those.
And they don't listen, they just, they, they, they cross the park once and they wave and give the finger, whatever, so.
That was actually brought up to Traffic and Safety at one point in time. I know Umer's has got these barricades that are on rollers that they have on the parkway.
Pretty use, yeah.
A lot of the Umer's school, the, do, schools do that. But that's actually managed by the schools and their administration and their crossing guards, they have trained that are on their, their payroll to do this. I think for us to do it, there was some legal issues on what you are legally allowed to do or not. So that was just kind of a handshake deal that some of these schools have with, with the township to do this. But as far as the village actually doing it themselves, I don't, I think there was some legal issues for it. But it's a really good idea. Like I say, Umer's does that a lot of the time.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, something, yeah, definitely.
That needs to be handled by the school administration and not by the actual village. So you almost need to go to one of the school board meetings and, and put that out there. It's actually a really great idea, it really is. Because like I said before, the personality of people driving today, and like she says, you know, they're trying to get their kids to school and then they need to go to work.
That's it.
They disobey everything and, you know, it's not the village's
I, I'm con, I'm convinced that.
problem that people don't know how to drive and think of themselves only. This is a personality issue.
I am convinced that no kid knows how to walk to school anymore.
But like I said, bring it up there.
You know, in our, in our year, we walked uphill both ways, even with the snow.
Yeah.
I've walked from mid Princeton between Highland and Washington. I walked all the way to Wildwood, I missed the bus.
Just bring it up to the, you know, to the, you know, um, to the school district, they, they're the ones that need to actually do, do this and put this policy into place and and whatever legal issues that are, you know, I'm sure the town will kind of put the blinders on for it so they can do it for all the right reasons. You know, good reasons with just people's safety in mind.
Okay, Ralph, do you just?
Yeah, last question. So therefore, uh, I wanna thank the village for, uh, posting the, uh, Traffic and Safety and all the other things that are on YouTube. Now, the way YouTube works is that you can get the data as to how many people actually watch them and do that. Could we acquire that information there? So therefore we actually know who's watching the Traffic and Safety. Because it's just, those guys are great. I mean, again, you know, talk about a thankless job and
I didn't know it was on YouTube.
Couple of months ago, we had the one couple that was over here and they were complaining about the fact is that they couldn't get the police to respond. And you couldn't get the Traffic and Safety respond and I basically said, hey, get over there and, uh, you'll be on camera. And he did, so, you know.
Isn't that data on YouTube, like when you hit it, set it up and say?
It'll say how many people, but not who's.
Yeah, they get, they get the information from YouTube, that's not, you know, a hundred people use it when they use it.
No, but I mean like the.
They get all the data that they get off Facebook and the other things they can get out of YouTube. So we'll have a handle on, you know, who's actually watching this and who's actually, you know, how much input is it actually doing?
Is it live on YouTube or is it?
Yes. Not recorded.
Oh, it's live?
It's recorded, it's recorded.
The board is live, but the other stuff is recorded, right?
Traffic and safety, planning and zoning.
Parks and Recs.
But it's not videotaped.
I mean, we used to have the, whatever cable commission, nobody is videotaping or so.
Oh, yeah? Oh, really, okay, okay.
So what's going on with thirteen thirty South Villan, they had an agenda quite often.
Thirteen thirty South?
They're looking at the legalities of what they can do and what they can't do.
Do you have any idea what's going on there or something?
He's, he's renting rooms.
Oh, okay.
From what I understand, he's got things, you know, ads out, you know, room rentals and.
Where is thirteen thirty South Villan?
Thirty nine block South Villan. That's the one that used to be in the, it was a nursing home.
It was, yeah, nursing home or something like that, yeah. But they, there's, they're looking at whether they're allowed to do that or not in a single family.
It's not zoned for that.
No, it was zoned single family, but whether or not you can rent out a room is what they're looking at. Because if you got a house, you know, if you want to rent out your bedroom to somebody, you know, you can do if.
I believe it's a commercial.
How could that be zoned single families with commercials for around forty years?
The zoning is single family.
Are we charging them extra for the garbage service there? Cause there's about ten fifteen cans out there every night.
I don't know, I doubt it.
So. These should pay extra.
Yeah, but that's, that's what they're, we are looking at right now, Melissa's looking at that.
I think that kind of segues or dovetails into what you've brought up a bunch of times with regard to the Airbnb's.
They're not paying the, the, the sales tax, you know, uh, well, first of all, rentals have to be thirty days or more in Gold Park, we don't know.
Maybe it's time to look at our Airbnb ordinance or lack thereof.
Do we have any Airbnb?
No, the ordinance that we have on hand, and this is going back into the Keener days, cause I have been banging this from lately. Keener said that a rental in this village had to be thirty days or more. So if you're renting an Airbnb for Friday, Saturday and Sunday, you're already breaking the rules. And we're not getting the tax like any of our hotels or motels in the area, so we're losing money that way.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, John.
Yeah, I'm just, are they renting rooms to people that are just in trouble or need at the time?
They're renting rooms to anybody.
Actually, actually, I remember when that house was on, listed for sale maybe two years ago. And it's, I don't remember exactly, but I think it's got like eight bedrooms.
Oh, eleven.
Yeah, it's a big house, I look at it.
Eleven bedrooms, eight bedrooms.
And then I started seeing advertisements for rooms for rent. And I actually know somebody that went and talked to him and right away felt the guy was very shady.
Okay.
Oh, now I know what I was talking about.
Who he's renting it to, are we getting some people to the street? Maybe it's an evil, but it's a necessary evil, I don't know.
He's renting, he's renting to anybody that will pay for it.
It said, the sign said eleven bedrooms. Yeah, I remember seeing that going, eleven bedrooms?
Yeah, it's got a pool in there, that's got a deck, it's, you know.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
If it, if it's a commercial.
And you put it on paper at first and then it just got eaten right away.
If it, if it's like zone commercial, I mean, if it turned into something where it was, I mean, I know they have some off of tradition. A place where it's a battered women's shelter and it's a transition place for a woman to stay for a month or two. If they have a commercial license or, you know, if it was like kind of a land farm thing where they have kids there. But to have people coming and going like that, you don't know.
Yeah, it's, but again, again, we, we gotta look at the legalities of what we can do, can't do, yeah.
Last question, sorry, uh, so therefore, is gambling legal in Illinois?
That was last question, last question.
Is what?
Gambling legal in Illinois?
Yes.
And so therefore, we had the Indian guys show up here that wanted to build a gambling place there. And a bunch of the trustees gave them a hard time. Why, if somebody wants to bring business in here and it's legal, why do you get to tell them no?
It's, we can, the board can, well, first off, it's the liquor license, you have to have a liquor license for the gambling. So with, the board approves the liquor license. The liquor license, if you have a pour, will allow gambling. People on the board, several people on the board are against the gambling, so they will not vote for the liquor license. So that's how, that's why, you'd have to talk to each individual trustee, why.
But that's voting your personal preference, not what's best for the village.
Well, yeah, it's. It's what some residents have said, you know, that we have enough of that.
Well, we do have a lot, I mean, I.
So if I want to open a strip club over there. Uh, at least I have a little law through.
Yeah. You would not have many people coming.
That's, that's an immoral thing here, why you can't get a liquor license for a sale?
Give us a free sample, give us a free sample.
Well, first off, I think, I think strip clubs are banned in our, our ordinances, I don't think you could.
Second of all, we don't want to see naked women.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's my point, like I said, if I open a strip club. I can't have a liquor license.
I'll be blind.
Just curious, because I was like, how come the morality police seem to have taken over here versus like, it's legal?
Yeah.
And the guy wants to spend money and we're gonna get taxed rather than use.
Yeah, and he's spending a lot of money, he's spending almost a million dollars on that building.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I would encourage you, Ralph, I would encourage you to speak to individual trustees on that because I think that there's some money layered issues with this.
There are many layers, oh, we've got, I mean, now I'm seeing Trump Road, there's a lot of places where you can do that.
When the gambling first came here in Hillopark, what was it, four years ago, Lombard said, we're not gonna screw this up like Hillopark again, alright? And guess what, they did, cause they said, oh, there's money to make you gamble. So I mean, the point is, is, I guess, I just don't understand.
Well, I think, personally, I think it'll be a sign for other businesses that are gonna wanna come in.
Absolutely, hundred percent.
I mean, we're already the Highland, the Highland.
Cause he spent a lot of money doing that and he worked with community development, he went through all of that effort and then it's like, what, what is that?
What's his, you know, my question would be, what's his next step? He spent three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars in there.
Oh, he spent more than that, he, he bought the place for, I think, four hundred and he's put three fifty into it. And he's gonna probably spend another hundred and fifty to furnish it.
If he's part of his business, they can't rely on gaming.
I don't know percentage, but he figured about ten thousand a month.
Twenty-seven percent, yeah.
Which is.
What would, if you were gambling, what would you do next if you don't get the list?
He may not open.
Well, we asked him, I asked him that question at the meeting and he said, I said, can you operate this business without the gambling license, and is, immediately he said, absolutely, that was his word, so.
I don't, I, I don't think that was a real honest answer, cause I think he's.
But that was his answer, I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, if you say something, I'm gonna take you at your word.
You know, he's got his money invested in counting out a liquor license, sort of.
Well, he, he could.
Is there any possibility, he could sue, right?
I imagine he could, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But we, we are gonna put up a ordinance similar to what we've got, it's called a quad E. But that, which was set up actually for restaurants where you can get a liquor license, but you can't have gambling. We're gonna do the same thing, just as a general liquor license for a bar. Where you can get a liquor license with no gambling. So that will probably be his fallback on that, but again, you know, even though he did say he could run the business without the gambling. It'll be a big hurt for him. You know, he, it would, it obviously would not generate anywhere near what he was expecting.
How many gambling places do we have here in Gold Park?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Twenty-seven. Thank you, I was gonna start coming in my head.
Now, that's not gambling place, you know, that's, you know, restaurants, bars.
There's like a Euro Express that's got the machines.
Yeah, right.
There's twenty-seven.
Right, there's, there's twenty-seven, there's twenty-seven places in Gold Park where you can gamble.
Well, at what point, I mean, when you say to me, if someone wants to bring in a gambling establishment, does the village have the ability to kind of control what it looks like or, you know, film like big signs, gambling, 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 I mean.
We, we met the manager, the community development director and I met with the owner Wednesday there, and after the meeting, the manager and Matt and Mark and I were talking about limiting signage at these places, cause that's, I think, one of the big reasons people don't like it.
We have a quiet village, we kind of want to stay the way we are.
Yeah, so that, but that, we, you know, community development can regulate that and sort of.
Oh, okay.
So, three points on that, number one, I have a number of residents that have reached out to me and said they don't like seeing all the Dotties and the Taco Bell with the, you know, slots, slots, slots.
Cellwies.
So, that's something, I mean, if they're calling me or sending me emails.
Oh, yeah.
I'm imagining they're doing it to other trustees as well. So as a elected official, I, I think it's important to just take that into consideration, give that some weight. I haven't received one call from anybody who says we should have more casinos in town. Well, no, and I mean, I'm not saying there aren't people that say that, but on balance, so we have to listen to that. Number two, I think as a board, we should decide how many casinos or liquor license we should have in town. And then make that a finite number. Right now, it's just ad hoc, anybody who wants one, we create a new license for you. Rather than having, right now, we have twenty-seven, so say arbitrary number, I'm making something up. Say we decide, we want to have thirty of these in town. Then you create thirty licenses and then you have a process to which people can come in and apply for and maybe it's a bidding process or something like that. But we decide as a community, how many of these do we want? Right now, it's, it's either zero or endless, depending on your perspective, because there are no available licenses. Every license we have to create. And then, the last point is, we should have a process for businesses, so not just this guy, but anybody, and I have experience with this, where you can't get a liquor license or you can't get a pre-approval ahead of time. So, but there's, it's not across the board. So for example, when I opened up my property, I went to Keener and I said, well, I want to spend this money on this property, but I want to make sure I can get a liquor license. And he said, well, you can't do that until you're ready to open thirty days ahead of time. And I said, so you mean I'm gonna have to roll the dice, take the risk and do all this investment and everything else and then hope that people want to give me a liquor license? And he said, yep, take it or leave it. Bye-bye, see you later. So, I don't really think that's fair for the businesses. But then you have businesses such as, and I'm, it's a point that I'm illustrating, not that I'm picking on it, but Domino's opens up a wine bar, they get a liquor license and they don't use it for two years. So, is it fair for everybody? No. So I think there should be a pre-approval where this guy could have come to the board and said, I want a liquor license and we vote with the board and says, okay, if you pass your background check and you do X, Y and Z and they know what X, Y and Z is and it's all transparent, we will issue you a liquor license and a gambling license for that matter, or whatever else you want. When the time comes that you get your occupancy, but right now, we don't have that. So, if we had that in place, that would alleviate all of this, cause there would be no question, there would be no secrets. You would come in, you would apply for what you want, you would tentatively get it. And that would be it, but that's not the system.
Is that a state law on the one law or is that something we created on our own?
What's that?
The thirty day, you get a liquor license, you gotta get ready to open up in thirty days. Is that the state of Illinois or is that us?
I believe that's the state of Illinois, like, uh, the like, the, I thought it was ours.
It's gotta be, cause I know.
No, cause I, no, I think the state says, it's a state law, cause you have sixty days from the time you get your license is issued to be operated, sixty or ninety days from the time you get your license until you actually use it.
So therefore, you have to have two-page public health or two-page approve your place, Illinois approve your place, we approve your place. And then you get to apply for a license, so therefore you could open up, much less having the place.
Right.
So therefore, there's five steps.
But you could work around it by getting a pre-approval. We don't issue you the license, but we tentatively.
Yeah, but see, that, that was brought up last year, it was brought up to the board, I, you know, there was one guy came in here requesting a license and then we had discussion about that one. We had, I think, six trustees here at the time. Three voted yes, I think one voted no and two abstained. So.
I abstained because at the time I had a license, so I couldn't.
No, you were accused.
Well, you were accused, but two people, two of the board members abstained. So it was basically, he was told, yeah, you probably would be able to get a license.
But it wasn't him, it was somebody else.
No, it was this one.
It was that property, but it wasn't that owner.
That was that property. Yeah, it was that owner, yeah. And when, when it came time to vote on it, one of the trustees that had voted yes voted no. And then the other, so then, well, that, there was no vote on it yet. But it appeared they had the board would not approve it, so we delayed the vote on it until the next board meeting, so there'll, there'll be another vote on it at the next board meeting.
I just think that there's multi-layers to this because I think that the, the word that Jack had put out there was transparency and I think that a year ago there was something different than what was brought up to us and that transparency is important to have that relationship with the board. So I think there's that, I also think that with the development of this Tiff District and this particular establishment being in the Tiff District, we have strategic planning visions, this is not something that I didn't say at the ordinance. We have these visions that we talked about, there are many groups that said, this is what we want this Tiff District to look like, this is what we want St. Charles to look like. Not once did they say we want gambling. And so we kept asking, do you, do you want, are you gonna, are you going to have gaming? And I don't necessarily know that the answer was always yes, it was like, well, that's in consideration. And I also think that this also will send a message to developers on what we are looking for in this Tiff District. I think that's important too, is we are looking for being able to develop down the road in the future. We have this opportunity, I don't want to really waste that, I know that we haven't always been that fantastic, we haven't done that fantastic of a job in planning and doing that forward planning and I think that you have to stop.
You used the most important word, transparency.
The plan. Well, that was his word that I picked up and like, this is.
Oh, okay, well, I thought you used it, I'll give you credit for it, the transparency.
It's transparency in planning and for, and like, know what your vision is and see, does it fit in your vision?
We have to deal with economic development, I mean, I had a, a business here and again, it was always that thing, it was like, uh, no, you can't do that, by the way, what is that? I mean, that's sort of the way it's always been here in Gold Park. And gotta get away from that, I mean.
Yeah, and it's changing, Mark's trying to change that attitude, you know. He's, you know, he's, I think he's doing a good job there, yeah, Donna, last, last time, cause I, I gotta get out of here.
I think the disconnect was, someone had sent me a picture of his previous properties. With him boasting about what it did to his previous properties, I think he should have been looked into then. I looked at his website and he says it's going to be a wine bar with gambling. I'm sorry, but you have four takes of wines for three dollars. You have samosas, you have mozzarella sticks, you have beer, that is not a wine bar. A wine bar to me is walking into Domino's, having that whole wall with wine with a little bit of gambling. To me, it's a gambling parlor with wine. I don't care what happens, either way, I'm not siding with the trustees, the president, matter anyone, but the way I looked at it, that guy should have been at that meeting a year ago.
State of Illinois made a decision to allow it and for us to play the morality police is sort of hypocritical?
No, it's not, if we don't want that much gambling in our village, it's our village. And I, I personally, just personal opinion, I think we have enough gambling places. You can go all up and down St. Charles Road and pull in and gamble wherever you want.
If you looked in a village in, let's say, Olive Lake Street and you looked in Addison, and Addison, Olive Lake Street was strip clubs, what do you think people would think of that village?
Ralph, Ralph would be spending all his money there.
That's not, that's not half dollars.
And then what development is that gonna pull in?
Right, I, see, I think you're right, and I.
And what development is that gonna pull in and what families are, like, who's gonna be trapped in the house now?
I think your word was right, planning and transparency. What are we planning for the village, do we want it to be a village, a family-friendly, let's go raise our kids in Billard Park?
Or not Las Vegas.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, all right, any, anything else, anybody else got anything?
Take a little quick informal poll, just.
Thank you for showing up, guys.
Just a little quick informal poll, who's in favor of allowing the casino license or the gaming license on that? And who's, okay, two, three?
No, I'm, I was.
So just start over, first, first question, who's in favor of it? I got one, two, three, four, who's not in favor of it? One, two, three, four, five, six.
There you go.
So this is, this is similar to what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine, then let's not complain that we don't have any money in the city.
That's ridiculous, one gambling place isn't gonna make all the difference in money problems for Billard Park.
I didn't think, didn't want to make that decision.
Okay.
So what?
Thanks for coming, everybody, I'll see ya, I'll bet you ten to one.
I don't think the guy represents himself. So I, I was, you know, the sad thing is that Google is right on their laptops and they're right here in real time. No, this, this, um, I'll find a table. This person's a, a zero.
Never seen him before.
But all the time it's the world, somehow.
Yeah, that's why you do it.
I don't see, I don't know who's to me. It'd be good to know.
Well, we should.